That for year four, so I'm gonna be open on it, we go ahead and do that. And then where they're building the new biking trail at the Field of Dreams, there's part of the fence that we're gonna have to move. And we got the estimate for that, and we have somewhere around thirteen hundred dollars. That was on the high end.
Twelve, eighteen was high, and twelve is low.
Twelve to eight, and so it's gonna be somewhere roughly through there. And that puts the, basically it's moving the fence to the, closer to the high school field. So I'll be bringing that up, that's all I got.
Um, I'm gonna be amending the motion that I made the last time to bid out the bathrooms. I goofed up and I did not check that before I walked in. I thought it was anything over fifteen grand, but specifically with public work contracts, it's over fifty. So I'll be making that aman to that one. And um, in turn, accepting Jimmy Trailer's bid that he had that I handed out, or handed around last week, last meeting. And the next thing is the Tom Bevel doors for forty-eight hundred with Jimmy Trailer, those will be fixed. Um, we've been having issues with those for a while, so those will be replaced. And we had a discrepancy with an employee paycheck, so I will be making a motion to correct that pay. I'll be authorizing the clerk to get a city credit card with First Southern's, um, First Southern State Bank. And then, um, last time I had made a motion for the PD to get some printers, and there were some initial costs involved, so I'll be making a motion to allow for those extra costs. And that's all I have.
Um, first and foremost, I'd like to congratulate the seven and eight-year-old All-Stars for making the state tournament again, back-to-back years. Last year, the uh, the city did a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar sponsorship to help pay for uh, the team and their travels and expenses they're going to incur. I'm gonna make a motion that we do the same this year, and uh, sponsor them to the tune of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We have uh, two invoices from Lad Environmental. One is for ninety-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars and twenty cents. And this is for the uh, upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. The other one is for sixteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we pay these uh, invoices out of our special accounts fund, with, with the caveat that um, it is to be immediately reimbursed by the uh, reconstruction loan, which would go towards what the, uh, go towards paying these, these invoices if it was reimbursed. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that, well, first of all, there are some election duties that are required of the mayor, and those are specified that only if the mayor is not running for reelection. Those are to be allocated if the mayor is running for reelection. I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Melissa Ledbetter and David Holt to uphold the duties of the mayor during the upcoming elections, since neither one of those are running for office. I also am going to bring up a invoice we have from Swan Plumbing. Uh, Swan Plumbing had to go in and completely replumb the pump center at the Mission, uh, at the Mission Center, or the pumping station at the Mission Center. Um, the cost of that was two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. I'm gonna ask that we reimburse Swan for the work that they did. Also, Olive Ranch Pumping Station is uh, is almost in the same predicament. Right now, only one pump is uh, functional on that pumping station, and it too is gonna have to be replumbed.
Excuse me, could I ask one quick, quick question? What are the duties on that Melissa and David want to take over at the election process specifically? I was just curious.
They're detailed in uh, all the literature that we get from the league on what, and each individual has to do.
From the league of municipal, okay, thank you.
Uh, some positive news to report, very positive news. Um, our accountant, Ms. Betty Holcomb, had sent out a eight-month report for the city of Ransfield. In that eight-month report, there is a comparative, comparative report to the prior eight months. And at this point in time, our revenues are set over seventy-three thousand dollars, above and beyond what they were eight months into last year. And by all accounts, last year was one of the best financial years on record for the city of Ransfield. So we are on track to have uh, an even better year this year. Now, I would like to point out a few of the items that um, we have seen the biggest increase on. Our concessions at the, our park concessions are up forty-four percent. Uh, our park fees and charges are up over thirteen, almost fourteen hundred dollars. I do believe this right here is um, from the good work of, of Mr. Sammy Smith. Uh, he has gone out his way to schedule as many tournaments as possible. And that facility now is a, a nine-month facility instead of the three-month facility that it was when it was originally built. It's being used all year long, and uh, that right there has a huge impact on our local economy. Uh, other items that are up, our, our lodging tax is up fifty-seven percent over this time last year. Once again, I think credit goes to Mr. Sammy Smith, and, and also to the Agribusiness Center. Those are the two uh, facilities that really bring people in, and they stay here more than one day. Now, our building permits are up over three-hundred percent, uh, the, the revenue that we generated from those. And, and that's substantial, that right there is the uh, sounds as though that we are having somewhat of a building boom, that more people are starting new construction, more people are building items in, in the city of Ransfield. And that will have a long-term impact upon our ad valorem, or the property tax that we receive, which by the way, our property tax was up six-point-two percent over this time over last year, which, that six-point-two percent equals a little over fourteen thousand dollars. Now, with this increase that we have received in revenue, there is also a decrease that we have had in employee costs. Our employee costs are down thirty-one, oh, thirty-one thousand dollars in the first eight months of this year, than they were in the first eight months of last year. So our revenue is up and our expenditures are down. We're eight months into this fiscal year, we've had reports for eight months into this fiscal year, and things are looking very good. That's all I have for tonight.
Get your info on the truck?
Oh. I don't, I don't have it. I'm sure Johnny emailed, truck info? What is the, what is the price?
Thirty-eight point one nine.
Uh, the, what's that?
No, the one sitting out here, the silver one, is a thirty-eight point one nine. The white one is a draw, oh, the other one, thirty-seven, one forty-two. So I, I don't know, I can't remember which one of you guys looked at. There was a difference in the suspension and, and other truck, um, with the white truck versus the silver truck. That's how I keep them separate, is when I'm having upgraded wheels.
All, all of our other vehicles are, are white, and that you're correct?
Correct.
And that white one was thirty-seven?
One forty-two.
One forty. And that is a state bid price, correct? That is not a, uh, okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a state here.
The, I wanna go back to the election duties for a sec. Is there any reason why the election duties couldn't be performed by the clerk?
I think there's certain things like presenting a, uh, the voter list, the final voter list to the clerk. I mean, the clerk does the majority of it, I think there's just a couple, but I've not gotten those together.
So, so no, the answer's no?
Correct, there's only a couple of things that me and, and David will be doing. I don't know as in a couple, as in two, but there are very few things that we would have to do versus Kelly.
True. Well, I think the statute calls for like a disinterested person, right?
Well, neither one of us is running.
They have a charter in office now.
Correct.
I, I just, I just felt like it was something that the clerk could do. You know, I mean, I, I don't, I'm, I don't know that there's a law, probably not a law that would be against it. But, you know, it could possibly have the appearance that it would be someone doing these duties that would be, that would not be impartial.
Well, I mean, we could double-check, but by no means are me and David Holt impartial in whatsoever way. I, the main thing is making sure-
I want whoever's to be impartial.
Hey Johnny, you get that door placed at the little voting turn meeting?
I want whoever's doing it to be impartial.
Right, correct, and as far as me and David doing it, I think the biggest job to do is making sure whoever's registered to vote and is on the voting list lives in Ransfield. I, I think that's the biggest job, and really I think that's the only one, if not a couple of other things, but I need to check on that.
So, is it something that the clerk could do?
We have to present a list to her, a final list. She's the one that checks certain things, but like I said, I've not done anything with this. I've had a ton of other stuff budget-wise that I've been working on, so I've not done anything with the elections. I just know us two are the ones that, we're not running, so we don't mind to do it. If you have an issue with us two doing it, then by no means we can-
Well, it doesn't have, it's not even, it doesn't have anything, just you two doing it. It's just, I would prefer someone that's, that's not an elected official, you know, do it. I think, I think the appearance is, you know, even though there may not be a, a law against it, or a rule against it, I think the appearance is that, you know, it, it might or might not be impartial.
Well, again, do you not want us to also set up the poll workers, 'cause we've also been doing that?
Well, poll workers have to, have to be approved by the income of the body, so there's no way around, there's no way around that, unless you're all gonna delegate that to, to the clerk as well. I, you know, I just wanted to ra, I just wanted to raise the question because, um, you know, I just think-
I, I don't care either way.
I think it's preferable that the clerk handle that. It's sort of, you know, it's sort of like our thinking. There's no rule or law against it, but it's the appearance that we're, we're going to lengths to try to avoid. And um, you know, I think over this term, you know, the council was going to great lengths to avoid the appearance of conflicted interests.
That is true, I, I mean, I have no problem with less one for me, so I have no problem us looking into it and trying to figure out the best measures for that. I think the clerk does the majority of it. The one thing that stuck out was presenting a final voter list of who's allowed to and who's not to. There are several that have come up to my husband, and specifically, that do not live in the, these city limits, that voted last election. That will not happen this election.
Yeah.
And we will make sure whoever's over it will make sure about it.
You know, also, since, since we are talking about the election, also, you know, we're gonna have to appoint a, you know, election manager, 'cause I can't do that, uh, 'cause I will be running. So, I mean, we, yeah, I'm assuming it's gonna be the clerk, but we need to formally do that?
Does that sound like one of us needs to bring it?
Well, you know, it needs, it's, it's gonna have to be voted on, it's, it's, it's gonna have to approve, because, you know, like, like, like you said, I, it's not something I can do. Any other business we can? White truck? Also, um, just one announcement, okay? One announcement, next Monday, you know, we've, we've got an ongoing comp plan, uh, that, that we're developing. We've gotta have a public participation component to that, where we, we invite the public, and we needed to go ahead and, and um, and do that and get it out of the way. I know, uh, uh, Ron and Lucas had come, and we talked about that, and everybody was busy. But we need to go ahead and get that out of the way. Pro, you know, I don't know if there'll be many people there or not, but we need to do that, um, next Monday. So, uh, that's the plan, I believe y'all are okay with proceeding and all this stuff, so.
I know next Monday I'll be out of town, so.
Yeah, okay. We just need to get that out of the way, so we proceed on that. Uh, Sarah's uh, summer worker has uh, has quit, and uh, anyway, she uh, she came up with another worker to uh, fill that role there, so uh, I told her to go ahead and get started on that. The position was approved, but uh, if y'all want to formally approve that, we've got that tonight too, so.
Time's up. Five twenty-four.
And one thing, qualifying started today, so. There's six names, it's only a while so far, so I'm gonna see how. Nope, yours is not a barrier.
I've been busy. They will be.
So I guess, is it two weeks from today?
Yes.
Are we gonna go, are we gonna point to the election manager? We need to do that to, uh-
Can we do it?
Just for clarification, yeah.
I'll bring it in, can we do it?
Yep.
I'm just reading some of the election stuff, and it does say that we can, it says a disinterested party, and if we're satisfied with the clerk doing it, we can do it, so we'll just nominate Kelly to do everything.
You can do it, Kelly.
We believe in you.
Thank you, Dave, and I'm pleased you're here. I didn't say it with any compassion, but.
You did, you did not.
Trying to make announcements?
Sure.
T V football sign-ups are going on, they won't end Thursday night. Uh, if anybody's taking notes for information, they can call Sammy at two-five-six-seven-one-seven-three-four-zero-one. We're also having a little fall ball, which really July ball, we play a few weeks in July. Uh, if anybody has a team they wanna get in it, they contact me also. That's a place, uh, softball, fall softball, July softball.
When is the first game, the quote-unquote fall ball season?
What?
July twelfth.
Fall in July, I'm just gonna have to die. We just call that summer ball, there's nothing fall about it.
We're gonna get in summer ball, so we're gonna call it summer ball. We just wanna call it July ball.
We call that uh, summer, and it just continues over, then we hope in the wintertime it comes up. We played in Tuscaloosa two weeks ago, and it was a hundred and two degrees, and you sit out there and feel, you just feel the heat.
We, we already began our practices for the fall ball.
I had somebody comment in there, I can say they would like to upplay all their ends, like seven o'clock in the cool off.
I'd like for us to have that same time scheduled too.
I would like to commend the city for the way the roadside looks. I think the, the ones you hired are doing a good job.
He's probably gonna hate it after today, 'cause I think today's the first time it rains since we've hired him, so it's fixing to go crazy.
So it does look good.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, meeting has come to order, Graham-
Present.
Ledbetter-
Here.
Freeman-
Here.
Lingerfeld-
Here.
Y'all looked over the minutes from the past meeting?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented and dispense with the reading thereof.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Police chief looking to buy a patrol vehicle, Don Duce Chevrolet, there a motion for that?
There a motion for that?
I'm going to make a motion that we buy the white Chevrolet truck for thirty-seven one forty from Don Ho Chevrolet.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Freeman, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, I make a motion that we pay the $2,852 owed to Swan Plumbing for the replumbing of the Mission Center Pumping Station.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we sponsor the seven and eight-year-old All-Star team, uh, for the amount of $750.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we pay the two invoices from Land Environmental, which tally the amount of $94,540.20 out of the special accounts fund, under the caveat that is to be reimbursed with the construction loan proceeds when they come in.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we appoint Kelly Frazier to uphold the election duties of the mayor.
I second that.
Sorry, I didn't- Well, I mean, I waited, no one's saying anything, so I'm ready to go.
I would like to add, we need clarification that she's going to be the election manager, that's... So we've got it in the minutes.
Okay. I will amend my motion that we appoint Kelly Frazier to be the election manager and uphold the election duties of the mayor.
I second that.
Motion by Graham, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's all that I have.
Um, okay, I make a motion to amend my prior motion of bidding out the bathrooms at the Tom Bevel Center in the last June meeting, um, per, uh, code of Alabama section thirty-nine dash two dash one.
I second that.
I was done. That was pretty cold.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the bid of Jimmy Trailer Construction for the Tom Bevel bathrooms in the total amount of $33,250.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, I make a motion to accept the, um, quote of $4,800 to replace the front doors and replace them with new doors.
Second that motion.
Did I say Jimmy Trailer or not? I apologize, from Jimmy Trailer.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that both of, uh, these expenditures be spent out of the capital improvement fund.
Second that.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that, um, a check minus employee taxes and benefits of $2,330.29 be issued out to Mary Barrington.
Second that.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to authorize the city clerk to get a credit card with First Southern State Bank.
Second that.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to allow, uh, Chief Stewart to spend an additional $1,000 for printers for the police department.
Second that.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That is all I have.
I'll make a motion that we purchase our yearly allotment of Christmas lights for a total of about $5,000.
I second that.
Motion by Freeman, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to make a motion that we hire to have the fence moved and the field of drainage for the new biking trail that's being built, could be 1,200, could be 1,800.
No, sure.
Second that.
Motion by Freeman, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
A quick, uh, on that biking trail, any updates on, uh, timeframe for completion?
They're working pretty decently, and you can go up there now, they've done built some bridges and everything else, and swamp part of it, so.
He's working pretty hard, he's-
It's a one-man show, pretty much.
He doesn't want to work himself, he's doing most of it himself. He's used to city employees, we've sent a city employee up there for like two hours on Saturday, which is when he would need somebody to put there. Well, I think we need to commend Chris Johnson for the work he's been doing.
He's done a good job, yeah.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, repave Carlisle Road, uh, along with, uh, working with the county, uh, to, to oversee this project.
I second that motion.
Oh, hold it. Hundred thirty thousand dollars for our part.
Hundred thirty?
That's plus or minus, they said about five percent, so.
It's cheap, a lot of dreams.
That's one twenty grand less than what we thought we were going to spend.
Yeah, we thought it was going to be about 150, it's actually down a little bit, so.
I'll second that.
Well, you got to second it.
We don't have it, okay.
Yeah, motion by Lingerfeld, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion to pay the bills, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Your summer worker.
Yeah, we got a summer employee at the, uh, a different employee at the library.
What's the name and?
Man of the Morales.
You want to do that?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we hire her as, as an employee at the Man of the Morales.
And I, uh, what pays go?
Uh, starting, well, it'd be, uh, part-time, and I'm not sure what that pay scale is.
Or time bottom?
Yeah, start and pay.
I second that.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn Ledbetter, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.